Now, open the main 2023 Select Board meeting. Then, to the agenda. I just want to have a little time on the Select Board for some updates or maybe no action. And we, I just want to have it noted in the news that we are, we have an appeal of the DRB, which you should receive a copy and an email. Just for the record, to know that's happening or going to happen. We might want to talk about this complaint at the end of the Select Board's session, session, as you know, we want. Then, we'll move on to the approval of minutes of April 19, 2023, or take a motion to approve.
Make a motion for proof.
I'll second that.
We have any discussion, additions, corrections? You're in on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Comments from the community? Do we have any community?
Nobody alive.
Okay.
Just me.
Correspondence? We received word of lines from the Department of Health that it's time for us to make a recommendation for the town officer, health officer, and the deputy for term of three years. I guess his term ends June 30, 2023. Just a notice from Front Court Forum about donations, I believe. Did we put money in the budget for July first for this? We've been paying them something.
No, we did not.
Well. Interesting, as we use it so much, that we should consider making a donation. We know in the past, we sent them $125. That's a, I think that's a year. I don't know when the last time was we paid them, and if they've sent them any money.
What time period?
But right now, on the Select Board for Selena's. Why don't I check with Belinda, see the last time we made a donation? And we can bring it up at the next meeting, Deb. Received a belated thank you from the Hines's on West Hill Road, thanking the road crew for replacing their culvert in one of our most troubled areas. It was nice. And we also received another request for donation from Northern Rivers Land Trust.
Is there any?
No.
What was that organization?
Northern Rivers Land Trust. And actually, they're going to be the organization that is going to hold the easement on our forest.
They're not looking for very much.
They're actually having their annual meeting Sunday, June 11, at the Mountain View Country Club in Greensboro. And Kate Marmar's going to be the speaker. And she will present scaling up how Woken Community Forest and Northern Rivers Land Trust contribute to landscape conservation goals. And they're asking for a membership of $10.
I think that's reasonable, yeah.
So do you want to make a motion then?
I will make a motion that we contribute, get a membership for Northern
Rivers.
Rivers. Um, $10.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. So on the health officer's term, he, I had this speech with him about his mile, we sort of spoke to him a couple of times this week. And kind of tried to find out what, if anything, he's been going on. And he was naming quite a bit of activity that he was working on. I would recommend that maybe he come to our next meeting to at least find out what's going on with the health officer, because he's had no communication with the town in regards to any health issues in the last year. So we do not even know.
I have no idea.
Right. So could we put him on the agenda for the next meeting? Just overview of what he's done for the last year as health officer. Maybe at the following meeting, we can make a decision on whether we're going to reappoint him or not. We won't do it without maybe.
Okay.
Keep him screening. Okay. Community again. We will move on to the project manager's report.
So this report is pretty an update of the one that's from two weeks ago. So the website Phase Two is active right now. It is, there's some building being done, and it's off stage. We still need to discuss with Bradley, Year Two and Year Three. Give you some more detail on what actually Year Two and Year Three entails. The North Woken Road paving bids is nicely complete. Garden rail should be installed in May. I was, I, School Street status is closed, but it might be open again, given this.
Blame.
Mowing bids are complete, and we did hire Boating, Isaac Boating. He worked in the town of Morrisville and Eaton. And looks to be a really good, really good choice. The municipal energy resilience program is just pending their opening of the application. They have, the application comes available by LCPC is going to notify us, and we can create an application. The Brownfield Study is pending. We were approved for Phase Two. So we're just waiting now for the engineering firm to schedule a date to come out and do the study. We also did a relevant application. This is the liability. Basically, it's insurance, liability insurance. If we were to buy that property, and for some reason the poisons came back up to the surface, it would limit our reliability. So basically, the engineers are saying, once we've tested, you know, it's good, and if you evolve the umbrella, then it's, it's guaranteed. So the umbrella application was actually done by the engineering firm. They have submitted it to the state, and they have scheduled the newspaper notification. There was a $500 application fee. And so that application fee will be absorbed by the BLCT grant. I think it's grant.
Yeah, the LCPC. It's that Brownfields. And the original, the Phase Two is in the amount of $21,655. It's a federal grant, plus the $500 that we will be getting for free.
And now we have to figure out reimbursement, because the engineering company has fronted that money. And I believe that reimbursement would go to LCPC, and then.
They need to just send their invoice to the cell.
Right. While the propane rate is complete for now, the price has actually gone down, and so the recommendation is, you know, follow the market until we start to see an uptick, and then we'll try to align that in at that point.
What is it at now?
They don't have a ton.
It was $195 this past year?
Yeah, and it's going down a bit from there.
Okay, that's just curious.
The opioid settlement is complete, so we've registered for that, helped the state out. I don't really know what comes to us from that settlement. If there is anything, it's probably pretty small, the state, state jury. Ramsey and A, they'll be working with LCPC again, just as we have in the past years. But this year, we're doing, we're going to have to contract with Rock. Parking lot of these is pending. That's the area right up over here, which is state property. Don't remember the last update I gave you on that, but when we get water, it, it's a very wet area. And so, an alternative is the area across from the garage, as the ball field. My recommendation is that we do these about six feet off of railroad street there, so we can push this note somewhere. Yeah, yeah, because right now, you're in a block of school realtor. That's a free lease. Transfer station, David, what is it, is on hold for this year? And forever, for. So handyman, you know, we ran the ad, we got some responses. One response, $40 an hour, so I'm passing that. And then, we did get a response from Bob Hoodley. Bob worked for the town of Stowe for thirty-something years, as maintenance guy. And I spent the day with him today. Three solid hours when all around town, they're rebuilding everything. He looks like, he's going to be excellent. Bit of a perfectionist, and I think the only comment I would have is that he, we're not in a state. So he's a little bit accustomed to having money, which, you know, he's going to have to be closely monitored here.
Yeah, we're not stalled.
Thank God.
It was, it was an interesting tour for me as well, because it really highlighted so many things that have to be done, that need to be done. There's so many, there's a lot of building deterioration and kind of ganja traps out there that need to be fixed quickly for me. For example, the roof lift that caused the heat that the town garage. So there was a gutter just hanging down over there on the back side of the garage. And then the snow got up under it, pushed the roof. It's repairable.
I didn't see it.
No, they just spotted it, they had it. So it is repairable, and Bob can repair it. Those are the kinds of, you know, you got to do that before the next nature. And so I think the other issue around the handyman is that we need to have priorities. And I know Linda's got a good eye of where problems are, and we can have set, set priorities for Bob. The, you know, some of the PBC type of the transfer station has torn over up in the, up in the fields there.
The vents.
Yeah, we, I saw them last week.
So that, that, that needs to be repaired. We've got to do something about the compost, composting area at the transfer station, because the bears are getting into it. And the solar system got destroyed. I couldn't care, I think.
It wasn't generally expensive unit, was it? Solar vent, vent on fence.
I'm sorry?
That wasn't a generally expensive.
No, it wasn't, but it just.
The solar part, though, was like $250, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So it, it lasted for two years, and neglect is what happens. And so the prioritization is going to be very important. So Bob is going to, he's got a big list, and now what we need to do is say, this goes first, this goes second. Some of it, some of it is going to make awesome money, and so we're going to have to consider that prioritization as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so tree warden is complete.
What does that mean?
What?
Tree warden complete.
Means we, then we assign it to?
You mean my green?
My green.
Yeah.
We kept the same tree warden, didn't we?
Yeah, okay, right. This is part of all the officers?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
And complete means that we, we've done, yeah. Health officer is open, it is learned. We have the X signs, I think that solves. Like, Deb and I still have a few signs to put up, which we'll really do before we update. And I'm working on the green area. And also, dangerous building ordinance. The Go Daddy renewal is complete. This is what we had to renew was the three email addresses they use. And but everything else, we are no longer using Go Daddy. In certain highway projects go, they have been working on the side brush. So they cut down a lot of side brush last night. They've been fighting the rain. And so a good bit, a good bit of grading that needs to be done as soon as things start out. But it's raining every day for six days, yeah. Pretty frustrating. They, they rented the brush cover from Pete's rental in Morrisville. And we got an invoice from Pete's for the rental, and then also a big repair mill. Talked to Dylan at Lincoln, he's pretty upset, because he doesn't feel that that was their responsibility, our responsibility. One of the blades broke off, which they do. We actually had to repair it ourselves at that point. The mirror did get broken, the mirror, you know, the big machine spits the stuff out. And it did break the mirror, so that's legit. And my recommendation is that we put together a list of what we feel is legit and what's not, and pay them for what is legitimate.
Yeah.
And, you know, can put it back in there. There's, there are, there were some things that, the way, you know, there's a metal base that had been welded together, because it had been broken before, and now they're trying to charge us for it. It's those kinds of.
No, no. Maybe they should get their brush cover back.
But they have.
What's that?
Who should have?
Oh, no, we should have, but get our brush cover.
Oh, boy.
No, I meant, they take theirs back, if they're going to be this way. I mean, obviously, these are damages that we're not done with the town of Woken. And if the repairs didn't hold by a previous user, what should we pay for it?
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, that's what Dylan is upset about.
Yes. Very unethical.
Yeah, I don't know Pete's.
I don't either.
And they're doing some burn, burn removal. Just cut off the plumbing with pet weed. Apparently, there's some phone lines running there in the still road that are only two inches deep. And so we got to call DCSA and stake those in. Two inches deep, two inches deep, physicalization.
Oh. So why aren't they already marked when they were put in?
They couldn't tell you.
And, and they're his? Did he put them in illegally, or did the phone company?
The DCSA. The other question is, and if I remember, this was when Arlo was alive, they went up there to grade that road, and they hit the wire.
Right, they did, that's true.
And it's because it's in our right of it.
Yeah.
So where's the documentation thing? They can put it in our right of it?
Hundred years ago, was that?
But I remember it being broken.
It was been ruined three or four times.
Hard time finding it. That was.
Because then you have the problem of who is the phone company at this?
Yes.
I mean, you know, pick a car, it's just.
Yeah. The, I know the cloud hit it two years ago. So at any rate, he's obviously concerned, you know, it's not state, and, but you know where it is. And we need to call DCSA, get them out.
Yes.
And so Dylan's going to go up there tomorrow. Ted's going to meet him at the road. They will survey that.
So is it on his side? I always thought the break was on the Mary Jane's side. That we.
Thought it was further off.
Yeah, I did too. I didn't think it was down by him, yeah. That's where I recall too, was further off. On the left.
Almost before you get to the same hill road. Where's?
Is it not in a conduit? You don't mind them, I mean. Well, I'm saying these questions, so when you talk to somebody, you can ask them, you know, why is it not in a conduit?
Yeah, I'd probably go up to Dylan and ask all the questions, but I just.
Yeah. I don't expect to have no answers, but.
So that's it.
Not to interrupt you, because I'm really bothered by this OD's document.
Yeah, we'll get to it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do I need to watch my, exactly, or do you need to speak?
So we'll move on to the Select Board review match, and we can take that up first. If you like. It was sent to Belinda. And she sent it out, and I'm going to send it out to you. It did not contain the complaint. When, when it first arrived, I looked everywhere. I didn't know what, what he was complaining about. But finally, we called the court and asked them, and they sent us what the complaint is. And what you can see up in the writing corners, it was filed on March 27, 2023. And the court signed it on April 23. You can see on one page, but then he didn't send it to us until last second. So we have until June 2 to respond. I guess it's up to the board whether we hire an attorney to respond for us.
We're going to have to. It's not like he's related to human samples, or samples used currently on the P H O. Right, am I wrong?
Yeah.
No, no answers, but.
Are they? I, my thought is that we should first get an opinion from Dave's, who is our lawyer that handles taxes.
Yeah, we're not here.
And then I, I guess my thought is, I'd just like to hear his recommendation, and if he recommends getting a lawyer. Fortunately, we have to. There, there's nothing to stand on, I mean, this is.
I know, but he can win if we don't respond to all his.
Understood.
All his things, so I'm just wondering. So I did think about him, and, and before I even saw the complaint, I felt like he was a conflict of interest, because he sold the property. But he's not really complaining about any of that. He's more complaining on how we handled taxes being paid. So I wouldn't think that he wouldn't have a conflict. I agree. I, I do agree, asking him his opinion.
It's probably, he hasn't got a leg to stand on, but it give up our side. I mean, if this is not a, an honest, straightforward what I know in the legal system is, that much, is just.
Well, you know, as Linda mentioned, you got to be careful in these things, because there are dates where you have to be responsive. And who do you think should handle, make sure that it's
I just think that the by June 2, you have to sign this saying that you waive waiver of service, meaning you don't have the sheriff serve all this paperwork. That you're just going to waive it. But that's pretty easy to sign and get that done. But then it also says you need to says you received a blank answer form, you didn't.
I'm sorry, anyway?
It says, I received a request to waive services of the summon, and also received the complaint, which we had to go and get ourselves. In a blank answer form, we do not have the answer form. Two copies of this waiver of service of summons form, a blank notice of appearance for self-represented litigation form, and in a way to return this form. and a way to return this form to you at no cost to me. So I think he, he hasn't, he hasn't given us anything we need.
Now, he has sold the property?
No, he lost it in tax, no.
Oh, okay.
And then the guy did his soul.
I think our procedures were all correct. I can't see where he's.
Well, we still need to go to court and prove it.
Well, can I get a legal counsel?
Do that, why, it's a question?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, um, if it's found that that, that complaint had no merit, can you recover your legal costs? From, from what?
I don't know.
Just seems like a bummer for the people of the town who won't get touched to say anything about.
That's right. That's what the answer sheet that we never received is to do. Saying we follow all the state statutes, go for so on, we have to go to court to prove this. We're gonna ask for the legal fees.
Oh, yes, of course.
So they're suing the town, well, they're, and the town clerk. But the town clerk falls under the town, you know, you can't really sue an employee of the town, I don't believe. So, um, what I'm hearing is we're going to wait and hear what Mr. Davies, the town's attorney's recommendation is. And hearing that if he recommends our hiring attorney, we will do that to.
Good.
To do that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And then, um, I, just so if nothing falls through the cracks, is Belinda going to handle the, uh, this, the, the waiving service? And and the answer sheet? Getting the answer sheet, Belinda?
No, I don't think she should. I think she should stay out of it personally.
Okay.
Um, I don't mind doing it.
Okay.
You just have to get over to the court.
Now, isn't the court's fault that we've not provided the all forms that we needed or?
No, I believe, uh, Mr. Webb, there was someone supposed to, um, give it to us. So I, we will need to reach out. I, I don't even wanna talk to him, so that's why we called the court today, not him. Um, she said we could reach out to him, but I could never even desire to. So I guess I will reach out to the court for that other page.
Right.
It's missing.
Yeah, he should have provided all that. This complaint plus the answer sheet, the whole nine yards.
Probably a plan.
I'll be happy to see that it's followed through, I'm not gonna answer the questions, so. I mean, I think, so if his recommendation is the lawyer to answer them correctly.
Yeah. This is a, yeah, this is a chain of events from the, you know, all the way from applying for this to be a religious, uh, person that you, to using Vermont or COVID money to pay his taxes to us.
So now that I'm really thinking about it, maybe you should, Kurt. Because you have that file and I don't have that background, I don't have that history. How do you feel about that?
Fine, yeah, sure.
All right. So we'll change that to Kurt because he has the, um, timeline of events. If you're on, okay then.
Fine, yeah. Um, yeah, my, uh, my local council counsels us to create a timeline. She's a council. Yeah, the timeline of events.
Yeah.
Okay, well, actually, here, we're close on this.
Well, can I interrupt on that much, have you or no?
Yeah.
I don't know who was on the ATV painting up the toll road last weekend, but they didn't do it this damn, but they were, they were picking up. Oh, I was there.
Wow.
No, that was whoever it was, even if it's, I don't know, because they were right at the other end of the toll road and pick whatever. I don't know, I don't.
Tell me.
ATVs weren't allowed on the toll road. No, I didn't stop, I didn't stop, I looked and I said, okay, he might get, he might get blown another hit by law, right? He's doing good work, doesn't he? This, it's, it's, it's walking, it's not walking, you just turn him on, you know?
And the, the toll road is really.
It is bad, it still wasn't going up a spalling hill and someone cleaned it down stuff there already.
Oh, there's a certain kind of person that's gonna.
I like the right side.
Everybody's parry is.
Pigs.
If they're caught doing it, what is it, five hundred and up for fine, good.
Yeah.
I think they should all get caught for this crap.
It's pretty bad this year.
It is very bad this year.
And there's really no excuse for it, and if they could get caught, it's, I see that some of it. I, I, somebody just got busted in News and Citizen the last couple of months, about eight hundred dollar fine.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
For illegal dumping, two spots for the yellow T and bolts.
Yeah, yeah, that's happened in Woburn too.
Oh, yeah, it did, I got one, go on there. It's her name. I, I, I'll, I'll take the rest of the media for remember her name, she was very upset. I think it was on Town Hill, there was a fellow from Grassbury, that he, he said someone was handling his garbage for him. Well, his ID was in everything, and they busted him for five hundred dollars. God bless the Lamont County. I mean, one of the deputies having to be really on that bandwagon and nail them good.
Yeah.
But, uh, I can't remember her name, I think she's a nurse apparently. Yeah. I hate it when a brain cell dies in the middle of a thought.
Okay, moving on to DRB Planning Commission membership, we discussed that last week, um, I did some research. So Planning Commission, uh, by statute can have up to nine members and the, um, the DRB, according to the zoning regulations, can have up to nine members. So presently, we have five. Um, I talked with Michael Berry through email again, and he is still interested. I invited him to come in tonight, um, I think we should meet him in an interview before we just appoint him to a committee. Um, he wasn't available, so Deb, he's gonna come into our May seventeenth meeting, Michael Berry.
So he's related to Jim?
I think he's just, um, so I've explained to him the rules and, um, different things, um, so he sounds like a weak candidate. I, um, explained the rules to Dylan too. Um, he's decided to hold out for now, is that true, so?
Yeah, for now.
Yeah.
I'm already seeing kind of, limited time, I have to put microphones in the studio. Wouldn't be true, but I know.
I did call Joe Robert and let him know that, um, Deb was appointed to DRB and that we were looking into expanding their boards. Oh, he knows that. Hybrid meeting equipment. Dylan's been asking us, um, for months and months and months about whether the board wants to get another TV or not, so we should make a decision one way or another.
I'm gonna, if it's okay.
Yeah.
Kind of explain the reasoning for it. Um, so we have this one seventy inch monitor and we have a small monitor here on my pedestal. And I'll show you guys in the room, but the people at home will be able to see, just there's none of them there anyway. The pedestal screen has one of the screens as well. And when somebody remote or somebody in the room that's connected to the meeting shares their presentation, it shows up here. So then I have to switch the windows, which is a little tricky, it's not too tricky, but somebody has to deal with. If you want this meeting system to be a bit more turnkey, having both up there, so you have one with the speaker and the other one with the grid of everybody on it. And then when somebody presents, the speaker view is changed to the presentation automatically. And that way, somebody just has to start the meeting, hit the record, actually, the record button's automatic, and let it run, it just gets a bit more turnkey so that there's less need for support, um. So I did some, well, anybody got any more questions from that part?
So, um, like, I'm speaking now, so it means I would be on one of the screens?
Uh.
If it wasn't a screen share?
It would just be the room with this.
Both of them?
Uh, no. One screen would have the current speaker, which honestly would be, it wouldn't be this room because it doesn't show you when you're speaking, it shows who the last person that spoke outside of the meeting.
So someone who's on Zoom.
Somebody who's on Zoom would be on the big screen fully, and then everybody who's in the meeting would be in a grid on the other screen.
Everybody including people on Zoom or people here?
Everybody on Zoom and then one of the blocks in the grid would be this, would be the camera from.
Right.
Device showing everybody in here, yeah. So that matters more when you have four, five, six people or more. Um, we've had a few meetings where it's been, you know, in the double digits. Um, the benefit would be that the second screen just is automatically there.
How much investment?
Uh, that's what I was about to say, I guess, I have, I looked up some numbers.
So what about, um, no one's, so no one?
Nobody's on today.
No one's sharing tonight, no one's on Zoom.
Right.
Um, so it would sit there blank?
No, yeah, I mean, both screens would be this, it would be two screens of that, because this would be.
Could one of them be whatever's in this little thing here, this little, whatever you call it, or the agenda is?
Um, that is doable. Um, so, is what I can do here is I switch the cameras to the agenda and I could just leave that up, but that takes the camera, that camera out. I could make it, if there's nobody in the meeting, to have both. That gets a little bit more complicated and that kind of takes the turnkey away again. Um, I think. I don't think that Zoom is set up in any way to run multiple cameras in the same feed. So it's possible, but then I'd have to add a whole other application to create that multi-camera view.
So why is this different than screen sharing?
Um, it's not different. All it, all it's doing is uh, creating less activity for an operator of your system to have to switch the screens around when somebody's presenting. Um, and I'm trying to think, there are a couple other scenarios where I've had to switch screens around, um.
So if we were to take our packet and scan it and send it as attachments to an email, is that the same as screen sharing and not have this camera?
So if.
It's going to get some use out of it.
Yeah, if your documents that are in the folders right now were PDF file.
Yeah.
And they were open on this computer, you can then screen share them to everybody in the meeting and they would be available. That would work.
Then you wouldn't have to, um, print out all these agendas for the public or they could follow us and so on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, there are ways, I mean, it probably wouldn't be that complicated, it would just be like a short little instruction sheet on how to put documents on the second screen outside of Zoom, just for in the room. Um, but I'm trying to think of ways to keep it as simple as possible, trying to put myself out of a job.
So would people, um, on Zoom be able to see that agenda on our screen?
If you're screen sharing it through Zoom, yes. But the other people would then see all the speakers in this room as a little thumbnail in the corner.
But they don't really need to see us, do they?
No. That's true. So also, the recording would be the agenda with a little thumbnail. So when I put it on YouTube later, it would, you know, it would just be the, you know, the document or presentation with a little thumbnail. Which is probably okay. But every speaker would only show up in that thumbnail, it would keep switching speakers, there would be no grid to see.
Any more questions? When we get to the money?
Yeah, because I'm at the point where I'm gonna go sit in the corner and eat my crayons, so it's hard for me to. It's not your fault, by the way, it's me.
So, yeah, it's okay, I, uh, I'm happy to try to explain and, and teach, uh, what's going on. Um, so I did some research on that exact model, there's still a few of them out there. Um, where did it go? Well, there it goes, uh, Walmart has one for just about five hundred. Uh, then we need one more Walmart, which is another fifty.
Fifty what?
Fifty dollars, so about five fifty, Walmart is the cheapest I'm finding. Uh, that's not a guarantee, that's the one we could get, it depends on if it's still there when purchase happens. Also, I don't know if the town can buy directly from Walmart or if you have to set up a tax.
We have to do a tax, yeah.
Um, which I don't know if that takes a certain amount of time.
It's usually, it's usually online.
Yeah. Um, takes, the other seventy inch screens which would match this are in the six hundred to seven hundred dollar range. Um, and the only other potential that is the, that may require a second video card be installed in this little PC and those are about fifty bucks. So we have the two outputs, one for this, one for this. I could appropriate this one, but it may make more sense to add a third video output.
So is our money looking at the size of this one here?
Yes, it would be, it would be a twin of this. And they'd be side by side. So I'd probably adjust where they're, you know, I may keep the center here and so put one on that side, one on this side. Kind of rebound them a little bit. You know, now that the walls are here, put some more holes in. Well, you have your hand.
He doesn't paint.
Yeah. What's that, well, tell me.
He doesn't paint, I'm having them.
Oh, right.
I'm not going to paint.
Why do you do my best to keep it as good as possible? I'll throw a paper brush on it. It'll be behind the TV too. What do you say?
Sure, yeah. No comment.
So what's your pleasure, do you have any questions?
I, I don't feel. I, I don't feel. I know I'm not stupid. I just, I just don't feel that. Personally, that's well, I've made a decision.
I mean, we could, we could table it and I could, at the end of the meeting, I could pick a few minutes and kind of shush it, talk about that most.
So what I think you. Dylan's trying to say is he's trying to figure out a way that um. If people come to the meeting like Kate or something or. They wanna do their PowerPoint or share things that we've watched before. That, you know, even more vibrant than the others came, they use their computer and showed us something. Dylan is trying to say is that he wants, he's not wanting to come to every meeting to be able to financial. How that works and he's hoping by having two. That it will just happen.
It'll be more self-contained. Somebody just have to start the meeting.
Or show it to be rigid proof.
Yes. It's, it's a bit of a ask, you know, it's a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, I, I'm not gifted. I, I, I went in to try to fill out the form for the licensing application for. For foster parents. We did everything else ahead of time. We, once we got the kids, we just. So I tried to do this alone. This was not good. My wife would have spit there. Walk me through it. Well, but no, I, yeah. It's clear enough for me, so I, I make a motion and we make the best one.
My uh, my hope was that there was still. That we'll do that too. I don't know.
So you're kind of guaranteeing that this won't be um. A lot smaller than.
Well, you may not notice the difference now because I've been doing this for almost two years.
Right.
Um. But you'll notice the difference if I'm not here, is what I'm trying to get at. It'll make my life easier if I'm in here.
So you just, uh, it will automatically do it? It will just automatically show on?
Well, once you start the meeting, both screens will be on. And so you'll just run your meeting and if anybody screen shares, it'll be on the one screen.
And they will, and they will know to just go on one screen or two?
Yeah, that's just how it's, because it shows up on the screen right now. Um. But that's not very useful to the rumors in general.
Right.
So what I do is I switch them so that everybody can see the presentation. But then nobody can see who's speaking because that's down here. Um, so now you can continue to see people speaking. In the grid while the presentation is up over here, it's.
It would, it would make it a lot more. A lot simpler um, in that situation or somebody. Um. And unless you have some knowledge of how to move things from one screen to the other. It would be a frustrating evening. So, I think that.
I mean, that's the alternative, right? Is to have somebody trained. To do this, but has some familiarity. Um, it's hard to be certain you'll have that person every time. Unless you have a dedicated volunteer coming every meeting.
And there's so many committees that are using it, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that anyone uses it so that um. Public can, you know, expand people who can participate.
You know, it actually makes the meeting a little bit. Um. Attractive to a community member that may want to come with it. I don't know if that's something the town is doing or has thought of doing. Like the meeting we're now. Um.
Not with Zoom, uh, anyway.
You know, somebody, so if somebody wants to host. A hybrid meeting for their local organization, it's uh, it's there or even if they're doing it for. Their work, um, and they don't have this capability of their work, it's uh. Um.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Um. Any further discussion? So we're made a motion to go ahead and purchase another seventy inch. TV screen. For the best prices we can find plus a mall Walmart, Walmart. And possibly a video card. And the funds will come out of our book.
I don't know if you want to like have all that, you know.
Who's purchasing it?
Well, you, you're a project manager.
I'm sure he'll give us the best deal.
I don't have to go to Walmart.
No, I think if you order it. But you might save somebody going there. Picking up in Brooklyn or something. Which I, I'm happy to help you with.
I'm just seeing their problem.
Well, you might find it better someplace else, Best Buy or something.
Yeah, that's where we get this one, just ask.
So I'm leaving it up to you to find the best. Deal.
I'm gonna need the perspective of the car.
Yeah, I gotta crack that open. You know, cut some ports for it free.
And the other, the rest of it is. The microphones are gonna try to get in.
Yeah, so at the end of the meeting, I was gonna ask you to uh, pass on my info here, you know, handy. Handyman, and I will try this up to time. Because it's kind of a two-person job, fish the wires.
Right, so I already told him about it, um. And um. So yeah, he's, he's ready to help with that whenever you're ready.
Uh, maybe we'll get in touch tomorrow.
And um. We should get him a, a better mouse, I think.
Well, we have the.
Can we just first one? Can we first um, like, out on this?
Yeah.
We have first and a second. All those in favor?
Alright.
The opposition? So caring, okay.
We, we have a nice mouse, but it keeps getting left on by people that use the system and kill the battery.
Does have an on and off switch in button?
So it needs batteries.
Thank you, Dylan.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy?
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be nice. The last touch, I think. Is super professional.
So I'd like to set the date for the annual community event. Um, I'm hoping that we could stick with the first. Friday after Labor Day. Um, we've done it the last two years. Seems to work out best. I'm able to get the ballet because they're back to come. But we need to start, um, I'd like to get a. Committee, some more people in town to maybe help with it. It's really too big for a few people. To put off, um. You need to buy the little tops for the signs. You bought signs, but. We can change the date on the top, um. And just start getting the word out. So I'm just asking if. We can um. Say we'll hold it September eighth.
It's worked before.
Yeah, the last two have been, um, it, it seemed to work out. Good.
I think the, one of the keys to success is getting the um, school involved.
Right.
Because. The principal got the kids involved, the kids got their parents involved. And that worked out really nicely. Well, it seemed like a nice occasion. It seemed like everybody was enjoying themselves. It was a nice thing to see. And uh. It was nice to see uh. I don't think I can get his names. They did the photography for this last town report.
Right.
Yes, that, that was just lovely. I mean, it was such a candid job and it was just that. It's nice to see a community activity that's wholesome.
Right.
And to be able to get pictures like that, you know, and that made the town report. You know, that's one I won't miss place, you know, I'll hang on to that one. It, it, they were just, it was just such a nice thing and that. And those photos are shoot at the occasion and I think it would, you know, you know.
So I'd like to get some more people involved. Maybe they have. Different creative ideas too, you know, we started off with our own idea and. You know, maybe expand it with some. Different entertainment, but I think the goal should continue to be um. Showing other townspeople what we're working on because you could, nobody ever comes to our meeting, but. On informing them of what we're doing so that they know and they can have some input uh, into. Ideas that we're working on and the drive is free food. Yeah. Yeah, right.
And it's a healthy thing. I don't wanna see it going down the road. Marsville just eliminated it. We're not meaning to, shame on them. But it's uh. I don't wanna see that happen here, you know. You know, we don't get a great turnout, but I think the community event will help increase awareness. And maybe people was, I mean, it, it was a very positive experience for everyone. Right, maybe it'll encourage them not be so apathetic. And get some more people to tell me more in our meetings here.
Is it, is it apathy or is it satisfaction with the job that I found in you?
Well, I don't think satisfaction, but. I'm seventy-nine years old, I think. Was it inertia? They have something to do with this here. Don't worry, it's, it's the more negative one. A lot of people are frustrated with the whole system, but. If we're projecting a positive image. And people knows that they can come in and deal with us. Like those. Like Washington where everybody sold their soul. It, it keeps a community, I mean, it helps keep it.
Becoming a good kid.
What's that?
Becoming a nice tradition.
Yes.
I just have uh, one thing popped in my head. Will this bridge be closed then?
Two thousand twenty-five.
Next year. Okay.
So you know, I'm not gonna get into it now, but you know, town meeting basically is what? An hour or two. You might wanna consider having it at six o'clock at night. To get more people. Um, it's not like it's gonna go all night, but it's something to think about next year. Dear, um. We had a really tremendous turnout for the um. Forest boat and we had it in the evening like that. You know, and maybe people could come and get their supper on their way home from work or something. Have pizza to buy or something. We get closer.
Yeah, hot dogs will uh, taste a little bit better at six P M as opposed to ten A M.
So on the same vein, um. This year, I'm hoping that um, you kind of consent to um. Deb and I talked a week about um. Doing rail trail pictures that should open up, I think Memorial Day, um, have. A photo contest of rail trail pictures of all seasons, um. In Wogan, families doing things. The forest will, it, it's too early for the forest pictures, um. So it will probably be. Hopefully they handle it, but might not be until January. What are you marrying first?
From what?
On the, when?
You'll be lucky if you see it by May or June.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure when that grant is.
From what?
And there are so many people that have won.
The federal, he said the federal grant is, is what's holding it up right now.
The funding.
Funding. They just haven't got enough people, big enough donors. Now they gone to federal. Grant. And that was filled in by Kate this month.
Right.
And then she won't know for another two months. Without any approvals. So, yeah, hopefully. And I don't even know if maybe. What was that? Bidel's, the. Department.
Habitat.
Yeah, Habitat, I haven't heard anything about that.
Well, the, the funding for the Bidel property is only contingent on the fact that we get funding for the Borns property. So we already have that funding and Habitat has already created the tape that um. He's, but it's all pinching on that, on the funding for the Borns property. And I did get, um. Speaking of that, um. I talked to Kate, um, actually our attorney was sent, um. A whole big uh, packet of all the information and basically tools and stuff, um. And he said. What's this? He called me and said, what's this? You know, you haven't hired me, what am I supposed to do? So I called Kate and um, I didn't think it was, um, I thought it was too big to just add to the agenda. So I asked her to come to our next meeting. Kate, Kate's gonna come. Um, so she has three questions uh, before us. And she didn't know, we wanted our town attorney to review it. Um. It has to do with, they found a small dam up on the Born property. Um, and then they did a phase one and two. Just the results of that and um. North, the railroad, north of the railroad over here by the village where it comes down to the river. They can't find a clean title. I know that the Borns could never find a.
Clean title.
And we are only gonna be able to get a quick claim on that. Portion of land. How do we feel about that? So she's gonna come. Next meeting and explain those three questions, um. I'm not gonna have David do anything. Um, well, I mean, not we wanted to hire him, but that's where they sent it to David Cole. And then we can decide. Um, Elsie, the Lemoine Planning, Lemoine County Planning Commission. Is going to hold their annual meeting they have every year. Um, here, this year. And uh, they, they fit walk it, um, because they wanted to kind of. Showcase all the work they've kind of been doing for us, you know, working like schoolhouse and. Where the rail trail is and the forest and everything. So it'll be here on the tenth, um, it's uh, open to the public. They usually. They're real quick toward meetings.
What's the date of that meeting?
June tenth. Um. I'm saying six. I think they have the board meeting at five. We have to vote on, on mid, at the budget and then. Then we'll have the regular meeting and then they give out, um. Community service awards and stuff.
Like that.
They have, it's a cater for dinner, it's not dinner, but. Hopefully I'll get a nice night to walk around and I'm gonna ask, um, Bob to. See if he can bring the picnic tables over. They, she, she came Friday and. Well, sit in the park. You know, his people can, if it's nice out, they can wander out to the park and in a gazebo and. Um. Anyway, I'll send you some more information on that. Anyway, I'll send you some more information on that. Rob Moore called me and said that, um, if we decide to move forward and move the parking for the snowmobile and trailers over next to the ball field, that other field. Yeah, they have found a little pot of money. They can help us with that in terms of, um, consultant with laying it out and also we probably need to get some permission from the state to make sure it's not flooding or too close to the river, but they're well into a six don't, but that would help me need, um, to, um, make that a parking area for them for the snowmobiles and so forth.
I think that would be the idea.
No, I don't think I'll pay for gravel or something, but then they pay for design and permitting and all that sort of thing.
I agree, I would.
And the last thing is, I just wanted to tell you that I already received a email from Maxfield English and he wanted, and he was part of the, um, planning commission. We had a, actually a workshop on this energy resilience program that we're going through. And he wanted us to consider, um, having an e-bike, e-bike charging station at our trail that he wanted to bring that up. That e-bikes are becoming more and more popular these days.
Does he know those, does he have an idea with those cars?
Well, it would mean, um, I think he means looking for a grant or, and so he sent it to me. We're gonna have to, we've got into the presentation, so I'm gonna reach out to Tori and see if that's anything that I don't think we could afford to just outright buy one or something. But there's a ton of grants out there. Most of them I could see had to do with cars. I don't know if they're interchangeable or not. I don't know enough about them.
I don't know if they're interchangeable or different system altogether. And it depends on what car manufacturer you get. Because the system for charging is different in each one. So you can't just say, here's a generic and put it in to recharge the car.
Mm-hmm.
One guy found that out and he plugged it in and actually welded the plug to his car. He had to take a crowbar and damage his car to get it unplugged. Oh, Jesus. Because it was an AM, AMK compatible, the software does not match up. Right, that's something they ought to be dealing with.
So your spark, your the other manufacturers for it all have a whole different charging system.
All different charging plugs and also software.
Plugs are the same, it's just a different system. You know, it could spoil your neighbor if I tell you.
Always spoil your car. Really.
Well, anyway, we will look, uh, it's just out there, the request is out there, you know, um, rants come across the table, but I just wanted, he, he addressed it to the slipboard, um.
The, the other thing I would say is the, you do put one in, it's gonna pay for the power.
So, um, do they work like, uh, cars where you have to put in your credit card?
The one in Burlington, it's going to be e-bikes. When you rent the bike, it will be fully charged. When you bring it back, it depends on how much of a charge you use, which would be.
But there's a lot of people that own one now, like Darling.
Right.
Belinda has one. You know, a lot of them have them. I don't think people like within town, their bikes gonna run out of electricity. I don't think. But it'd be the people that might be going. Anyway, I'm, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying it's out there and so I'm also bringing to the attention when we think about the six feet the lease, we should also be thinking about where we're gonna put the portal that come July. And if we're gonna have any other thing like that at some point, um, if there's more, a little bit more room to off the conceivable area that we might consider leasing if it isn't that well.
Is there enough room by the road right by the, is you hope, hope one?
A corolla when you're eating? No, I don't.
And that we don't, we don't have that right next, but.
No, I don't think so. I'd rather have a thought from ours.
Thanks, those things. Whatever thing you cannot hold your breath long enough, you have to, before you get up, you're, you know. Uh-oh, uh-oh, what is it? Jax, he's trying to escape. I was gonna say we should appoint the candidates, have a security.
I, I, I think it's a good idea, but there's just too much logistics.
I don't know, I, I will just go over and, uh, go to the house and go find out whatever
on universal.
Right.
Then you're not gonna be, that's what I'm saying, it's with cars, it's small.
So, uh, there is a company in Johnson, Eva, it was Eva Tempest, I don't remember the Tempest. But, you know, she's not Tempest, I forgot, Rose maybe, I don't know her last name is. They have a whole e-bike touring company and I might be able to reach out to her if her brain.
Yeah, you're concerned, we, we need to know on universal, it's not the quality it's gonna be, because you saw again. Maybe have, uh, six or eight hundred dollar e-bike, they don't want, you know.
Well, he just says, not sure if the slipboard has plans. We could look at an e-bike charging station for our Lemoine Valley River Trail. So I brought two.
It seems like.
Do we have anything else?
Just give you.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I made a motion that we adjourn this on the forty-seventh, sixth, eighth B M. That was approved last time, correct? Yes, okay, yeah. I want to pay and it's not there, it's about ten dollars, when I thought of it nine, I, I'm the one to suggest raising the price. I didn't, I could, I could rely on that.